2019 Plankford Board of Education Regular Meeting is now called to order. And Mr. Gibson, the first thing he would like to do is have a little prayer.
We've had a little bit of health scare in our district this week and last week with Mr. McClure. Been a lot of outpouring for him to get better. And our students and staff and our community has rallied around him. And I think it would be appropriate for us to have a prayer, if everyone doesn't mind that, I'd like to. Let's bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we want to come to you this evening and humbly ask that you reach out and you touch Mr. Chuck McClure and use your healing hands to bring him back to full health and to put a hedge of protection around his wife and his daughters as they go through these trying times. Mr. McClure is a big part of who we are in our community here in Paintsville Independent, but in our whole county. If you can, just protect him and get him healthy as quick as possible so we can get back to the kids and students and, most importantly, to his family. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next, we should have an House of Office for the newly elected board members, which would be Mr. Walker, Mr. Fuller, and Mr. Porter.
Go ahead and stand up. I repeat after me, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof and that I will faithfully execute the best of my ability, the office of member of the Paintsville Independent Schools, Board of Education, according to law. And I do further solemnly swear since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending. So help me God. Congratulations.
Hey, Jeff, can you just shoot somebody?
Yeah, you can shoot somebody as long as you don't have a duel.
What should you do?
Before we go on, there's four of us. If you and Butch can't come up here for a second, we've got a special presentation for the three of you. You come over here. Stacy, can you take a picture for me and just text it to me? We here at Paintsville Independent are very fortunate to have such good, strong board members, all of them. But the fact that we've got three that have now served this district starting their second decade, when you say it that way, it sounds a whole lot longer. For 20 years, you have been stewards of this.
You're starting your third decade.
Yeah, but you've done two decades. There you go. You have been good stewards for this district and we're very thankful for you. So in honor of your 20th year and starting your third decade, we've got you plaques that say thank you for your 20 years of service and dedication to the Paintsville Independent School District. You've been a phenomenal team. And we've got a phenomenal team off island, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to be here with you. And thank you for your service. Mr. Fuller, there's yours. Mr. Porter, there's yours. And if we can look over here and smile. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I've never seen a decade or easier than starting.
That's a good one. I like that. So thank you very much.
I've got more plaques than this last year and I know what to do with it.
That's either, you can take it there if you see. It could be a good thing or a bad thing. I'll let you decide.
We're going for good.
There you go.
Ken's going for United America, that's national.
National Board Member of the Year. You know, you think about what you've accomplished, it's pretty remarkable.
As a team.
As a team. And I think, the meetings I go to, y'all should hear about talking about board superintendent teams. And to me, that's the most critical thing and I'm very thankful for each other. You've been a blessing to me. Mr. Porter, your last official duty, I believe?
Motion to approve prior minutes.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we have a selection of the 2019 Board Chairman.
I would like to nominate Mr. Brooks Walker, please. Marlon Brooks Walker.
I'll second.
And move for the nomination, please.
I'm first, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Walker, I guess you can just sit down there and we don't have to get at it.
Sounds good. Gentlemen, I appreciate your vote and your confidence. I must say, I don't have any communications through the board. Well, you've got a select vice chair.
Oh, okay. That's Ken's job.
Yeah. The board's open for nominations for the position of Vice Chair.
I'm making a nomination for Ken Ford to fulfill the 2019 position of Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, next thing. Katie, do you have any communications to the board?
Just a few items.
It's gonna look a little bit different. Obviously Chuck's not here tonight. I talked to the principals the week before on the type of information I want them to see, what you ought to see. So not only are we gonna be, you know, obviously the dates are important and what we've done, but I've asked Katie and Chuck to send some data so we can see what's going on in our classroom. So I think that's something you have for now.
Just a few items first. Junior pro is up and running. We'll do that through the month of February. And that's for students in grades K through four, junior pro basketball. I'd really like to thank Seth and Stacy Law for Mike and Kendra Short and Brad and Tiffany Austin for spearheading that. It takes a lot of work, but yeah, that's size of league. We've had a great turnout for it, lots of kids everywhere. Fifth and sixth grade boys' basketball, wrapping up their season as well. Actually, they're playing their last home game right now. So in just a minute, I'm gonna head out and head over there. Academics, elementary team is up and running. We are hosting District Governors Cup here on February the 9th, so we're looking forward to that.
Who's the district? Johnson County, Martin?
District for Governors Cup, elementary's really small. It's Central Elementary in Porter that used to be need when they existed. And then they go into the region, which is all of Johnson County, Martin County, and right now, they've put Lawrence County in with us. Some years, we have Lawrence with us. Some years, we'll have Floyd County with us. It just varies.
How about Flatgate?
Flatgate, the rest of Johnson will come into the region with us.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all the Johnson County schools, all the Martin County schools, all the Lawrence County schools. Region is in March. WR is the host this year. The last item I have does revolve around data. One of the first things we look at student data on is when they come into kindergarten, we wanna kind of get a baseline of where we're at. Since 2013, we have given what we call a Brigance Assessment, and it is a one-on-one verbal assessment just for us to gauge how our kindergarteners are coming in, whether we feel they're ready or not, and also to let us know what specific things we need to work on with them. On the first page, in the blue bars are our students. And then the green lines are compared to the state averages. And that's just for this year's kindergarten class. The kids that are in Ms. Hicks, Ms. Blankenship, and Ms. Pugh's rooms right now. So you can see that we're above state averages in all demographic groups with the exception of males.
Let me ask you, Brigance, what orders it tests?
It tests academic skills. It also tests gross motor skills, you know, whether or not they can walk in a straight line. They put one foot in front of another. Do they have basic balance? Tests number recognition, letter recognition, can they do some basic addition? And it's a one-on-one assessment. And basically, you get a score of, is a child above ready, basically meaning they scored in the 90th percentile or higher on that assessment. Are they ready? That means they're somewhere between the 70th and 90th percentile. And then below ready, below 70.
I'd say on disabilities, bottom right, we have zero, but they have 34.2% of the kids who are disabled.
In the state.
And the state, 34.2% is disabled?
34.2% of kids with disabilities come into kindergarten ready.
In those grades?
In those grades.
What quantified as disability?
That means they already have an IEP, an Individual Educational Plan, or they've already been receiving first steps for a speech issue or an issue where they can't move around, like physical therapy or occupational therapy.
That's one in three.
And if you really, we don't, the reason ours is zero is because they come to us, they've not been assessed yet.
And for us to really, for it to be valid, we'd have to have 10 or more kids coming into kindergarten that already have disability identified.
The one thing I do wanna point out on this, and this is why data is so important, is the trend of free and reduced lunch.
That's almost double.
Yeah. And it's, she's, you're probably, you're close to.
We're at 60%.
I was gonna say 60, I was gonna say 59, but you're close, and that's gone up since I've been here.
That's the demographics.
The first year I was at Paintsville, it was 25%.
So that's, that's one of the things that we have been looking, why this data is so important, we're able to identify kids now in a different way. So that's one, this is really good stuff.
The second page of the packet shows data for the last three years. You know, you can look at data for one year and kind of get an idea, but that, you know, you're dealing with one group of kids, 60 kids, and you can have variations year to year. So you really wanna look at more than one year. So this shows the last three years using the same Brigance, you know, looking at kids that are now in second grade, what were they like when they came into kindergarten? Our kids that are now in first, what were they like when they came into kindergarten? And our kindergarteners right now. As far as all students being ready, we hold pretty much in the 60s. And since 2013, we've held 60-some percent. The group at the 52, they were a little lower coming in.
Yeah, it was a challenge last year, so it pissed our kids.
And then males readiness versus females, the last three years, we've seen higher female readiness than males. The concerning thing about this to me is each year, that male readiness has gone down. And if you go back to 2013, same trend. We had a discussion about this today at site base. One of the things that we thought might be a good strategy when we implemented Brigance is I visited all the preschools that our kids come from and just talked about Brigance and the importance of readiness skills. I think it's time to go back and revisit, talk about the importance of readiness skills with our male population and share strategies with them that we find effective.
Stacy, Stacy, Stacy's planning over there, just wait. I know that we're implementing a new POC model this year. Kind of explain why this data is so important. How do we communicate this right now in your building with your kids?
What we do with our staff, as I've shared this with them as well, they analyze this. They're actually the ones that are gonna come up with strategies for us to share out to our preschools and head start that serve our kids.
And you also, in most of your grades, each kid knows their data, especially in the math testing grades.
I'll be honest, we don't share this with our kindergarteners. I'm not really.
They're not, they're not there, but what we're doing in the upper grades is each kid knows where they are, so they see them. And I know when we do math testing, the three of us that have kids in the system, I know my kids come home and say, this is what I've got, this is where I'm at, as far as math testing.
Ethnicity, again, we don't, you know, we really don't have the numbers to show African-American, Hispanic, or two or more races. You have to have 10 or more kids in a group to show that data. We don't. And then other, free and reduced, and it's held 40-some percent about every year they're ready. Do y'all have any questions?
Which is the 60-some percent, Mr. McGee?
Free and reduced.
That's total.
Total, like, if you look right here, Joe, that's every kid. About, you can roughly say 60-some percent of the kids we get come to kindergarten ready.
Right now, the females are holding the males.
Okay, okay.
But if you look at that data, it just kind of spirals down.
Think about it, think about it this way. The males and the free and reduced are about, holding about even.
That's a good, that's a good point.
One of the others is only one.
One of the, one of the things that we've had many conversations about is as our demographic changes, our teaching strategies have to change. And that's why POCs are so important too, because now you're looking at that in a way, all right, this male population, how are we getting the meat the kids needs? So we've got to evolve, and we're doing a pretty good job of that. So in particular, I'm real proud of your staff and all of the high schools that have a POC. And we got a half-day training. That's one of the reasons why the half-day training's been so effective, because now they've got time to do these things. Ms. Mullins and Ms. Carroll have been in, what, twice to your building?
Ms. Carroll came last month, I'm sorry, Ms. Mullins came last month, and Ms. Carroll's coming this month.
And then Ms. Mullins is gonna be at the high school. These are CAVIC, our CAVIC partners, our educational co-op, that are coming to support us.
We've worked with them, I've worked with them three years. They're great.
But I'm real proud of our staff, we're proud of how they're getting in this POC process. Thank you. And this is the type of stuff that she'll be sharing, Mr. McClure will be sharing at our board meetings.
Y'all have any questions? Thank you.
All right, see you. Thank you, Katie. Yes, actually, before we get to that, we only have one personnel report, and that's Mr. Lemaster's retirement. Although I never did get his resignation, I just assumed he quit.
We've been sure though, we want Burt.
If you, I assume we don't need to vote on it? No. I will tell you this, if you need any honeydews done, just, I think Renee is offering him out, so.
I saw him right before I left, and I asked if he was going to leave, and he said, no, they'll probably keep me.
As far as superintendent communications this month, a couple of things I wanna touch on that's really, and I really can't put this to words in a piece of paper, so this is something I'm gonna be talking from my heart. You know, we've got a remarkable little system here, a very passionate community, and the outpouring of love that I have seen, really going back to Christmas Eve. We had our special ed director was also dealing with some health issues. We spent the morning in ICU with her at U.K. I hope that doesn't embarrass you. She's sitting over here, we're thankful to have her back, but she's still got some health issues she's dealing with. And the outpouring of love that has been shown to her and to Mr. McClure over the last few weeks has been, in my experience, been unparalleled. We've got a tremendous little community here, and our staff's really in tune with each other, and I'm thankful for that. And Mr. McClure means a whole lot to me personally, and I know he means a lot to you guys, and we're just hoping for a fast and speedy recovery. I think sometimes we get wrapped up in the day-to-day operations of our school system. We fail to take, take stock of the people that we work with every day. So I'm very thankful for the way this community is showing their love to Stacy and to Mr. McClure and to, you know, that just shows how important this little school system is to our community. And I wanna thank Mr. Cochran and John Central for their outreach. They have, Mr. Cochran has called me every day about Chuck, and while we wanna beat them, and we're glad we did, and everything we played, basketball-wise, but we also, at the end of the day, know that we're all in this together, we're all one good community. So I'm very thankful for that. So that's all I've got this month. How you doing?
Good. You all right?
Glad you showed love, I could keep a little control.
I can understand that.
You barely got us sworn in. Okay, action items. Motion to approve payment of the monthly invoices.
300, what?
Mr. Schmidt, this is your bag.
33.
How much the monthly invoices for the warrant? So, yes, everybody got a copy of that? You cannot think it open. Here they are. Of course, it's sideways, so they're scanned in there.
300.
Where you want me to go?
In the very.
Last page. Can you read sideways?
We'll try 340, 345, 345,770.
Good, Mary. I don't think I can do that on this.
Did you open yours?
I don't think I can.
I don't have no ideas.
I did not. I'm gonna try.
I don't think I can.
I hate to say it, but.
Yeah, and I'd say this is all.
These are our items this month, Mr. Schmidt?
Probably the biggest item I got is our final payment to construction. We do have final payment, the check cut, we do have some things that are not complete. So we will be holding some of that out. But we wanted to go ahead and get the check cut, so when they do complete it, we can go ahead.
How much was it?
Hundred and sixty thousand, I think, altogether, somewhere.
That's about 180.
Yeah, it may be more than that. I know there's.
Why would we have 180 before, if we wouldn't have that, our bills would have been approximately 180?
Yes, yeah, oh yes. If we hadn't had the construction, we'd been well within our spending limits. So the job is completed, other than they are working on, our padding on the bleachers is really not very durable. We found that out, a little use we've had with them, they're already starting to break. So we had that conversation. And the key was to Orioh Tree. Elliot is having some trouble with their vendor, Atlas, which is providing the doors to us. So they're a little bit behind, there's a couple of parts that they just didn't see in. So Elliot's really frustrated with them. So that's the two things, big ticket items, that's really it. Once you get the doors done, but I wanna hold some of that back. Hate to pay somebody never seen them. I guess the other thing we add is interest, we have a bond payment this month, and we gotta put one in for accounts account for next month. You can already tell he's gonna talk more Burt. I don't know that I heard Burt talk the whole year and a half he's with me, so.
Look, it's T. Sean, burning T.
So.
What's, how you, what you gonna do, if you have a check for $160,000, and you're gonna give him 140 of it?
We're gonna run a special pay, check run tomorrow, and we're gonna cut back 10,000. So we're gonna issue two checks, but we wanna approve the total payment.
Okay, okay.
And we'll run two checks.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Dangle one.
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly invoices of 345,710.
770. 770.33.
33.
I'll say. Also on your packets, I want to.
All in favor?
Anybody opposed? Okay. So that's approved. Before we go forward, this is something that Joe's put together, I think it's really nice to look at. Joe, you wanna talk about this for a second? This was in your agendas online, I don't know if you were able to open this.
Yeah, the, pretty much every month, you got the monthly financial report that you gotta see for each month. And this is the month of December. I went back, went back from July, filled it all the way up through the end of this past month. And it just takes, pretty much takes this report, that you get the breakdown for each salary codes, FICA, Medicare, and other expenses. And I run a report on Immuno's that combines all the total, how much have we paid up salaries to date, how much have we paid out of our FICA, Medicare, and the other expenses. And I go pretty much in there, and I put how much revenue we get in, I'll bring over our carrying balance from the previous month, and it adds up to revenue from our Immuno's report, our expenses from each code out of the Immuno's report, and it comes down there in total, and it matches up with what our, our balance sheet report.
Is this information on the website?
Not yet. This is a brand-new document.
I do have a copy if anyone needs a copy, but.
What I like about this, and something he's not added to it yet, is that we can go back and look at our year-to-date compared to a year ago. And if you look here, you can see the estimated end of balance for next fiscal, this current fiscal year compared to last year.
Right. And what he says to me, really, and I think to you guys, would be after we get this started and get this input, that we can look back at previous years and do a three-year comparison, five-year comparison, see where we were this time, last year, year before, and moving forward. It will kind of give us our cash flow, and what we have in the bank, and how much our revenue, how much we spent this December of 2018 as opposed to where we spent December 2019, and have an idea of going up or going down in expenses as well as revenue.
And the good thing about it is, it's, it's a whole lot easier reading that Immuno's report.
Absolutely. And the website is transparent?
Yep, yep. Yeah, so I'm excited about this. I'm thankful for Joe, he came to me with the idea, and I think it's a good idea, and I think it allows people to see where we are. The biggest thing, it shows that we're healthy, that we're very healthy. So, thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
That leads us to our next move. I call for a motion to approve Mr. Schmidt as treasurer for the Paintsville Independent Board. I'd like to make a motion to approve Joe Schmidt as a treasurer. All in favor? Anybody opposed to this?
Yeah, you need bonded.
Yes, we got all that thing here. The unique thing about this is Mr. Lemaster's name with tomorrow, our raise goes into effect. Mr. Lemaster's name is still on the check, so that raise will have Mr. Lemaster's name on it. And I had a teacher point that out to me. So his name will be on the check that we get the raise? I said, yeah, it will. So I thought that was pretty interesting.
Yeah, Mr. Lem, I would.
Yes, he does, he does.
If he's bonded with Mr. Lemaster, 'cause anything wasn't wrong, we went out to the bank and found the money in the account.
That's right, we're gonna say that.
And then one of the reasons we have to, we had an issue when we went to the bank to get that change over, we had to have you guys.
Board.
Okay, well, we're there now. Okay, motion to approve the 2019-2020 draft budget.
Go move.
Any questions? All in favor?
Yes.
Anybody opposed to that? Motion to approve the 2018-2019 Comprehensive District Improvement Plan.
This is our educational plan for the district. We also have the schools do a comprehensive school improvement plan. Mr. Ratliff produces this for us, and it goes along with our testing goals and where we wanna go.
I thought this was the best issue I had to think.
And I have to, I have to talk to Mr. Ratliff for a second. We've exposed him to a lot of stuff lately. He just got back for a trip to a hub school in Carter County. And a hub school is a model school that the Department of Education recognizes as the best practices in the state. So he's been exposed to stuff that he hasn't been exposed to. So I've seen a lot of growth in him. We actually have a team going on the 23rd for ACT prep. So, and that's stuff that you only get good if you're exposed to it. And I'm real pleased with the growth that we're showing.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. We approve the 2018-19 Comprehensive District Improvement Plan. Ask for me.
I'll say. All in favor? Anybody opposed to this? Motion to approve out-of-state trip for PHS band to Orlando, Florida, Walt Disney World. I'd love to make a motion to approve out-of-state trip, PHS band, that organization worked off the chart, and had to deal with over the years. They're giving a concert that night?
They actually were invited last year due to their performances to perform in Disney World. And they have been in a massive fundraising effort. They have raised close to 12,000, 13,000 dollars.
Four thousand dollars.
Yeah, and it's a $20,000 trip.
You talked about a group of kids that was almost doing a lot for nothing, too.
Misses.
What are expenses?
None at this point.
Not even the bus?
No.
I'll make a motion.
Even Mr. Master.
I'll say it.
She's also fundraising for band uniforms, so I wanna put a plug out for that. She's got a GoFundMe that I think the Alumni Association put on their website. So if anyone wants to contribute to Ms. Sexton and buying them new band uniforms, go to the alumni page, I think the GoFundMe's on there. I think the GoFundMe's on there. You know, she's done a phenomenal job, she sure has.
She seemed to come into the junior pro games and started selling stuff to try to raise money. Okay, did we go down, all in favor of the trip to Orlando?
No.
Anybody opposed? Motion to approve the district technology assistant extra service stipend and job description.
This is a, because Joe's new duties, we need a little bit of extra help there. He was able to leverage our KS fund, so this doesn't come out of our general fund at all. It's a $1,000 stipend with a job description attached.
We're not paying the $1,000?
That's coming out of the fund too, so it doesn't come...
I make a vote.
Love you, mate.
All in favor? Okay, motion to adjourn from regular session and enter into executive session under authority of KRS 61.815, .810, to discuss acquisition or sale of property, section one, proposed or pending litigation, section two, and/or personnel matters, section three.
Go move.
All in favor?